All right. Blake's gonna text me when it's live. We are live. Good evening, everyone. We're gonna call to order the special meeting of Stillwater City Council for May 12th, 2014. And first on our agenda, and I guess I should remind everyone, yes, we are filming, we are airing, the TVs are off in the council room, but it is being broadcast. Okay, first on our agenda, we have second reading of ordinance 3260. Mr. Dorman.
In ordinance amending Chapter 3, alcoholic beverages, Article 4, low-point beer by amending Section 3-92, consumption of low-point beer in public places, warnings permitted, exceptions allowed, penalty declaring an emergency.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on this item? And this is, first motion is second reading of the ordinance, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion on the second reading of ordinance 3260?
Second.
Mayor Bartley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weaver?
Yep.
Councilor Noble?
Yes.
Councilor Darlington?
Yes.
Councilor Nahara?
Yes.
That motion passes five to zero, and then there's a request for declaring an emergency. Is there such a motion?
So move.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
And a second.
Mayor Bartley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weaver?
Yes.
Councilor Noble?
Yes.
Councilor Darlington?
Yes.
Councilor Nahara?
Yes.
That is also approved, five to zero. That'll take us down to resolutions. We have Resolution CC 2014-4, which are the rules in connection with Lake McMurtry. I think those are, did anything change on those from last week when we first saw them? Does anyone in council have any questions about those rules or this resolution? Not, is there a motion on Resolution CC 2014-4?
I move to approve Resolution Number CC 2014-4.
Motion and?
Second.
No, a second.
Mayor Bartley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weaver?
Yes.
Councilor Noble?
Yes.
Councilor Darlington?
Yes.
Councilor Nahara?
Yes.
And that resolution is also approved, five to zero. And it'll take us down to general orders for some discussion about next year's fiscal budget. Okay. We've had several presentations from city staff, and we have gone from public input starting in February specifically talking about this, and then we had our public, more public input. We've all received information from the public, and so tonight is really kind of our last opportunity for the big picture discussion before the public hearing, which is next Monday. Now, especially for our new folks, the public hearing doesn't mean the budget's adopted. And the public hearing, once that's open and closed, doesn't mean everything's locked down and in the books. The public hearing is just an official step we have to take because we've been getting public input every, every day. So, just a reminder about what that public hearing is next week. I know there've been, there's been a lot of discussion, we've had a lot of questions asked, both at council meetings, and then also that we all individually have been talking with city staff throughout the last several weeks about some very specifics. Tonight, we have that opportunity to continue the conversation and really to, a, a good focus on that big picture. And I ask to make sure that we all had the circle charts from last year's budget, both the revenues and the expenses. And the reason I ask to make sure that we all had this in front of us is, just as a good reminder to us, that as city councilors, our, our real job is to make sure that the circles are the right sizes, that the amount being allocated to each of the departments for each of these items are the right size in proportion to the other circles. And then the implementation of that is what our staff does. And then that throws it back on to us to make sure that their implementation is the proper way. But in drafting the budget, you know, it, it can be a quite simple analysis of, are the circles the right size? And then obviously we gotta delve deeper into, to each as need be, but that ultimately is our question. Enough of my intro. I'd like to throw it out to the council. It's conversation time. That's why we're set up the way we're set up, so let's have some conversation. Who would like to go first?
Well, I will go first.
Okay.
I have a question about the budget. It's probably, I just can't find it. It's, I don't know who to look, where, where's, here you go. I'm gonna look at you, but I may have to look at someone. Tennis, our tennis courts, I don't know how much money we're putting into the tennis courts, or I can't find it, I'm certain it's in here. Could you explain if we are putting any money into tennis courts?
We are. Tennis courts have been an issue we've heard a lot about in the public for the last couple of years. During this past year, we did try to make some repairs to the, the courts at Sunset. We tried to simply find a company we contracted, put a new surface on them, had limited success. The cracks are coming back, and we know it's not great to play on. The, the other major courts are the ones at Couch Park, same condition, and we didn't want to, you know, I think both sets of courts are past just superficial repairs. So, we have placed $400,000 in the capital request for, in the Parks Department this year to completely reconstruct the, the playing surfaces, completely take it out, put down new bedding and properly put in pre, pretensioned concrete surface with a quality playing surface. And those courts then at Couch should last significant long time. We realize that the, the repairs at Sunset are not ideal. We're checking with the contractor to see if there's any, anything they can do on that. But I think, you know, I don't, I don't think we wanna take all the courts out of play at one time, so if we once, if the council approves the budget this year, we'll rebuild all of those at Couch Park and have some quality courts there, and then we can start planning the following year to see if we have budget to work on the ones at Sunset, either rebuild them there, or possibly even relocate them closer to the ones at Couch Park if we have more room. Location is still debatable, but anyway, yeah, we are addressing the tennis courts.
Okay. Thank you.
I, just a follow-up on that. I have had a lot of input from the tennis lovers in the city, and they had a really nice proposal explaining what kind of support the USTA would give as far as specifications for courts and even possibility of grants from the tennis association, so I hope that that will be included in considering.
We will work with them, pursue that as well.
Thank you.
I think the main thing we need to think about is just like with the playground equipment, we can't fix every playground in one year, but we need to systematically be on, working on the facilities to make sure they're, they're up to a standard. And as long as we're, you know, attacking the tennis courts, do this park here, then the next year do another park, and just systematically address it, I think that's, that would be a reasonable approach.
That's kind of a, you know, those are, both playgrounds and tennis courts, we've heard that from the council pretty consistently the last couple of years. We also have heard it in public input, so, you know, we really feel those kind of things really had a lot of weight going into the budget process because we heard them from both sources. And that's, that's what we try to use for all these budget items, is what have we been hearing from the council in your visiting sessions and visit, visioning sessions, and how you've addressed other issues and discussions, and also what we hear from the public, and we really hope these are reflections of that.
Stan, Parks and Rec, on the $100,000 for, requested for Boomer Light Playground, is that a complete change-out, or is that just improvement to what's there currently?
It would be a complete change-out.
Okay.
A complete change-out, yes.
Is there any other parks slated for next year as well, or just Boomer would be the only one? Okay, thanks.
Couch, last year, and Boomer this year, and they're, they're working on, well, if it's approved, they're working on Myers and Arrington right now. Myers is actually having its grand opening tomorrow.
Tomorrow, 10 o'clock, I believe. 10 o'clock, Myers Park. There'll be bubbles and children, and it'll be fun.
I don't wanna go a totally different direction, but I think this, trying to look at the budget as a new counselor, a lot of numbers.
There are.
And it's, it, it doesn't have any context for me, and even thinking about tagging on to the discussion about the tennis courts, yes, a group can send a lot of emails and get a lot of airtime, but what is the long-range plan for Parks and Rec? And, and how does this budget reflect long-term goals, short-term and long-term goals? You know, $2 or $2 million is, doesn't mean a thing out of context.
I understand. It's a, and I'm gonna let John address this, John McCloney as well, but we have, we have a huge number of park acres in Stillwater per capita, probably more than any other city in the state, and so a lot of the long-term plan has just been maintaining. But we have, the long-term plan is to replace all of the existing playground equipment and bring it all up to date, to rebuild the tennis courts is what we're doing, those are part of the major facilities. The, the ball fields, now that we have an agreement with SASSA, we're sharing some of that maintenance with SASSA. John, you wanna address the long-range plan for the park, or?
And here's what we need to do, we need to be passing that microphone. We'll use that microphone for that half the table, and this one will take around this half the table.
Just as far as, as far as the, to comment on what Dan said about the amount of land we have, that's been one of the biggest issues for Parks and Recreation. It's a, it's a good thing that we have that much, but it's also not a good thing in terms of the size of Stillwater as a community and the amount of land that we're trying to take care of. So, the long-term, the long-term way in which we've dealt with this, originally we thought maybe there would be some ways to divest ourselves of some of this land, and it's not always possible for various reasons. But through entering public-private partnership agreements with groups like the Friends of Lake McMurtry, the Friends of Multi-Arts, and the Stillwater Area Sports Association, we've been able to address the issue of the amount of land we're taking care of in a different way. And we've been able to shift resources from what we were mowing and maintaining to other areas to take care of the parks, and also even to other areas of the city, because we just recently were able to move some employees to water, wastewater, and streets. So, we've been able to address the issue that way, and that hopefully will give us more resources to focus on fixing playgrounds and tennis courts and the things that have gone neglected in the past because we've been trying to take care of the amount of land. We have around 5,000 acres, and to put that in context, the nearest, the, the nearest city I could find that had that much parkland was Lincoln, Nebraska, with a population of a quarter of a million. So, we are, our budget for Parks and Recreation as far as maintenance goes is just about right for our population, but it's not when you consider the amount of land that we're trying to deal with. So, that's kind of the long-term plan, is to refocus those resources on something other than mowing.
It was, again, as far as the specific, I'm just gonna mention, I, I've started meeting with a group of citizens once a month in the evening, and we had our meeting last week, and it was interesting, and talking about parks, there were a couple of issues that came up that made me think that maybe we needed to, not in this budget, but in the coming years, start having some public input and assessing our parks for a park plan, because there were a couple of really interesting topics came up through that. One was, it was a group that felt that even though our parks are ADA accessible as far as a parking space and a curb cut to get on the sidewalk, they were saying they were hard-pressed to find swings or any kinds of playground equipment that were for those with disabilities. That you had to park a wheelchair, carry somebody to a swing a distance, and then carrying them back, and they were saying, you know, they weren't complaining, but saying, could we look at some possibilities? It was also brought to my attention that, we, some night, we, we've got a small skate park, and I didn't realize how, how much it was growing in the demands for it, and they're gonna have some tournaments here, and she started giving me, asking, could we look into the possibilities of, of expanding that, because it's, it's a growing sport and attracts a lot of visitors to the community if you're large enough to support statewide or regional tournaments. So, at least, I'm not suggesting we add those to the budget, but I'm saying is, it's pertinent to the question, I think we need to start looking at that public demand for park facilities before this time next year, and we may find some things that we're, we're missing in our plan.
I'm not really just picking on Parks and Rec. I think you do it, I, we have a great assortment of things to do in Stillwater, but it, not only just in the sense of looking at it for next year, but there's no place, or at least I haven't been able to find a place that said, in 2015, we're going to look at ADA, all of the ADA accessible places in Stillwater. We will have checked up 95% of them by next May.
We do have, the Park Board did do a strategic plan. It's, it's got a couple of years on it, but is it on the website? That would be, that would be worth reading to read.
They've done several things, not, not specifically related to ADA, but there was an assessment done of all the parks a few years ago as far as accessibility goes, and most of those recommendations have been, have been implemented.
I recall they, they made recommendations of a list of projects they would.
Right.
They, they received input on that they thought we should consider advancing.
They were, they were very much focused on, on dealing with the, the land issue that I just mentioned. They were, they were instrumental in developing the Trail and Bicycle Master Plan that was recently approved by the city, and that's had an impact on a lot of the things that are going on Parks and Recreation-wise. So, there's several different plans out there that are in various stages of being implemented.
And on, on your point, it's one of those with our, our organization, and we have the Community Enhancement Committee of two councilors, I think that would be a good, one of the elements of that committee to be really digging into is, how do we make our community better, being its big question, and how Park and Rec fits into that, I think needs to be part of that analysis.
I really wanna take this off of Parks and Rec and make it a budget question. There's no way for, you know, this was, you know, these numbers are printed in just an Excel sheet, and there's no way to look at, you know, we're gonna do, we did $1 million last year, we're gonna do 15 million this year. Why? Because we have these projects, and, and it should be really accessible outside of here. You know, you met all your goals last year, and you have five more goals that you wanna meet this year, and it needs five more million dollars. I just think that would be very helpful in the sense of community enhancement, making everything that we do, making us accountable for the amount of money that we're asking for. Does, does that sound clear?
I understand, same.
Okay.
I like that idea. It's almost like putting a strategic plan into the budget, so you can see. I like that.
Are there questions?
While we're waiting for questions, I wanted to, to point something out, again, going back to the first presentation, and, and I agree that there's a lot of numbers, but we, at some point I have to deal with these numbers. When I presented to you, and I put a copy on the council's table, the spreadsheet that showed the operating budgets for all of the general fund, the ESUA, and all of our restricted funds, and I showed you it added up to 109 million. And I said, I combined them all in one for simplification. If you've looked at the, the public notice budget sheet that we have presented, it's in the newspaper, it's on our website, it's everywhere, it's gonna be the subject of the hearing. Doesn't mean these numbers can't change at council direction, but if you'll look in the, the right-hand column down at the bottom, you'll see the total expenditures for all funds, 149 million. And I just told you it was 109 a couple of months ago. But if you'll look at the next to the last column, transfers out, 40 million, that's funds that are being transferred between one account and another account, they're not really truly expenditures, and you subtract that from the 149, there's your 109. So, you can't always, these numbers are much larger in their totals because they include transfers back and forth between funds, and every time they're transferred, they count as a revenue in each fund, so.
This format of what has been in the newspaper and what is on the website, so this format, is this the state-mandated format?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so this is the state-mandated?
That's the required format that we need to, we need to publish it in, yes.
But this is the working document?
Yes.
Of what, this is what makes sense from an operational implementation standpoint? Yeah, we hope.
But the public doesn't see this, correct?
Yes, we do make, we're trying to make it available. It's a little cumbersome, if you try to put it on the website, it's, it doesn't show real well. We can put multiple pages in a PDF on the website, but again, you know, it's, we can, you know, people wanna come in and look at it, we can do that.
We could put it on the website, though.
We could, yes.
It's just four pages in a PDF.
Yes. The only thing is, is it needs to have some caveats. Like when I presented it at the council meeting, all the caveats are here, this is not the way the budget's legally presented, it has to be presented as a general fund, an ESUA, and so forth, and so we're publishing something that's not truly an approvable form. It's an educational tool, as long as everyone who looks at it understands it's an educational tool and doesn't say, well, here's the city's budget, that's not a true statement, so. I mean, it is and it isn't. It's a combination of all the city funds displayed together, and I can't legitimately say this is the approved budget, because legally, you approve part of this as a council, part of it as an ESUA, part of it as CETA, and so forth. And so, I just, I just have to be careful with the context, not that I'm trying to keep it from at all.
It's, it's very helpful when you look at this.
And we can certainly put it on there as, as a-
Compared to what you're watching right now, compared to this, this is very helpful. And I think it would answer questions.
Okay.
Another, you know, my only probably experience, other than Oak Creek with big numbers, is buying a house, and when you think about going to the bank and getting a mortgage for your home, there are all kinds of formulas for what percent of your income should be, you know, debt, and what percent. Is there percentages for a healthy city budget?
I've looked at a lot of professional journals, I haven't seen anything along those lines. Marcy, you may have, and part, part of it is, you have to kind of take some things out of context. For example, the percentages will be entirely different for a city that has no electrical utility, because if you look at all the budget items, what we spend for wholesale electricity is $28 million. And so, that makes our cost of purchased materials and supplies extremely much higher percentage than a city who doesn't purchase electricity. So, it's very difficult to compare city to city, because some cities have a electric utility, some don't. Some have a waste management department, some don't. And so, there's, it's, it's very difficult to find cities that are truly comparable in their scope of services, and so those, those kind of percentages are pretty soft.
I know. I tried to look in my amateur way at other cities and try to see what was, you know, what I could compare, and it is really difficult because the language is different and all kinds of things are different, but it seems that there should be some, you know, personnel is this percent, public safety is this percent, I, it just-
I think as you look at most cities, 60, 60% of total expenditures for personnel is pretty common somewhere in that neighborhood. 57 to 63, 64%, that's very, very common for a percentage of budget that goes to personnel. We're, we are a service-driven corporation, or, you know, it takes a lot of people to deliver service. We're not delivering so many products, it's we are services.
I might add, so that too. Since we are driven by the budget, as Mr. Galloway said, it's very hard, even if we took like the police department of Stillwater and tried to compare it to a police department of another city, because we are budget-driven, we may have decided to really pack a bunch of funds into the police department at Stillwater. We may hire officers, we may buy a lot of new equipment, and then go out and try to compare that to another city that's just doing the basics. So, our budget drives what we do, and, and you'll see that when we publish our financial statements from year to year, we get questions from auditors, well, why did this change so much? Well, because our council made a, a priority to have that expenditure. So, there's always things just kind of poking out that you can't, it does make it difficult to compare city to city. Now, we have had an audit firm in the past that has tried, they're, they're a nationally-known consulting audit firm, they've basically gotten out of the audit practice, and they're doing more consulting, and they do, it's kind of a report card that they can apply some certain statistics for your city to determine if your city, if that's healthy for you, but it's not real comparative, you know, to, like, take Stillwater's score compared to Edmund's score, or someone else's score. But it's a little bit more indicative if you're getting off track based on your history, or looking at what your sales tax trends are, or something like that, to see if you're kind of out of balance. But I haven't ever seen a really good tool to compare city to city to city to city. Now, sometimes in the utilities, for public, or private utilities, they use a lot of the same nomenclature, and, and so sometimes I think it might be easier to compare our utility to another utility, but it's very difficult to compare cities to cities.
Did we get capital improvements for the library? I don't see that on here. I know that was, she, I don't know the director's name, but I know she said that that was not put in, but we were supposed to be getting that, and I don't see that on here. I stumped the crowd.
This, this copy, I put it out before that change, but it has been changed.
Yeah. Can you just stick some, yeah, can you say what it is, or what you're asking for as far as amount?
The library asked for a vehicle.
22-5.
22,000.
And, second question, the police vehicles, is that replacement of vehicles, or is that just adding to our fleet, or?
Both.
Simple answer, all right, next question.
Both. Those vehicles are, the vehicles that are on the road are actually evaluated by the city garage, and based on prior repair costs, based on the life of the vehicle, how much expected life is left, and that kind of thing. Determination is made in how many cars that we need to buy to replace. If there are cars that are still inside a window that Fleet has also helped us with, then we will keep those to have pool cars and add to the fleet.
Okay.
And we are-
And we are, we are trying.
We are trying to add some vehicles in the police department as we can over time, as we've, we've talked about, is that with their totally pool cars, the car is running twenty-four hours, you know, from one officer to the next. If we can gain a few extra units, we can cycle those vehicles, and so that some of them aren't, and they'll last much longer, maintenance repairs will go down. So, we are going to gradually try to build the fleet up, so that we don't have to run every car around the clock.
Would you talk about why you're moving to, from sedans to the Suburban?
Yes, the entire reason that we've moved from sedans to Suburbans is because the amount of equipment that's in those cars is pretty phenomenal. The, there are two radios, in some cases radar, computer, and all kinds of attendant equipment in the back of that car. In addition to the fact that most sedans that are built today, once you get a prisoner-containment unit, which is a nice way for saying a cage, between the police officer and whoever may be hauled in the back of that car, it's impossible to get a person my size in there if I'm at all resistive. And so, we tried to find something where there was a trade-off between the sedan and having enough room for the officer to conduct business for ten hours a day, and we settled on the Chevrolet Tahoe. One of the reasons is, is, most people say that just can't be, but it is, they get at least three miles to a gallon better performance than the Crown Vixx did. One of the reasons for that is, the Crown Vixx had a four-speed transmission, these have six, and some of the technology has improved over the years since those platforms were developed, and they just get better, better mileage, and it's a better car for the service. And they are designed specifically, they're not four-wheel drive, they're designed specifically for police use, they've been lowered somewhat, the suspensions are different, it's not like one you would be able to go in and buy out of the dealership.
We've noticed on the campus that when there's snow, or there's high water from rain, that our sedans can't get around, but the utility vehicles still can get around.
That's correct, they, they are better in the weather than, than some of the sedans. I'm trying not to mention a brand name here, because I don't want to offend anybody, but they are so low to the ground anymore, probably all of you have experienced that you can't pull up to a parking block bumper anymore without hitting the thing. They, in an effort to gain gas mileage, they've radically changed the aerodynamics of most automobiles, and because of that, they're very low to the ground. There's clearance issues, and as you all know, police cars are sometimes used in somewhat of an extreme manner, and, and the high clearance, the higher clearance is an assist, both in a weather and in other situations, when you have to get off-road.
There's no doubt there's a growing trend in that, in that movement to the SUV for police, just in, I mean, the last three weeks, I've seen Oklahoma City, I've seen Edmund, I've seen Dallas, I've seen McKinney, I mean, just, everyone is moving that direction for utility vehicles, and it's obviously not a unique thing anymore. On this budget, how much is the tran, the end result transfer from SUA to the general fund? I know that's a slight, I mean, there can be some according in that, but, okay?
We, we budget that, and, for example, right now, we don't know what the, the exact transfer this year is, because that's a placeholder, and until we get very, very close to the end of the year, there's a lot of factors, but again, depending on general fund revenues, and also how, how much we may come in under budget in the general fund, we can minimize that. So, that, that's an estimate, and the goal is always to minimize that transfer if we can. We normally come in significantly below what we budget in that transfer, but it's a safe number to put in the budget. Would you agree with that, Mr. Blankenship?
I mean, it's, it's based on the budget, and then as, when we get to the year-end, we only transfer our, our, the practice that we initiated, just only transfer the amount of money that is necessary to balance the general fund. And so, it's going to be, this year, I think we're projecting at least a couple million less than what was originally budgeted.
Is it a couple million less than the prior year transfer?
Yeah, prior year was twelve point eight million.
And you know, we've talked about this a bunch of times.
Oh, I know.
Wish we could get to a systematic approach of reducing our reliance on SUA to balance the general fund budget. And I know we have that reliance, we had the downturn in the economy, but I just think it would be better if we can get to a place where we weren't relying on SUA to balance the general fund's budget. And even reducing, reducing that.
No, I, I agree, and it's, it's part of the confusion in the budget. You know, I'm a little hesitant to mention, again, I don't want to create confusion, but there's, our general government, our non-utility government, actually operates on two percent sales tax. I mean, we, people talk about us having a three-and-a-half percent sales tax, and that's very common in Oklahoma. In most cities with a three to three-and-a-half percent sales tax, that's what their general government operates on. In our case, one half penny is dedicated to the streets, and no problem with that, and the other, the third penny is required to go to the SUA. So, we, we transfer that seven to eight million dollars per year to the SUA. So, it depletes what we have in the general government, it's spent in the SUA, and as soon as it's transferred over there. But at the end of the year, SUA, the money gets made from other sources, we have to transfer it to the general fund, so.
Plus?
Yeah, and I, I think, I think that that, you know, again, not to say too much, it's a policy decision, I think that third penny transfer, I'm not saying we don't need the third penny, but its, its transfer to the SUA maybe have outlived its usefulness. I think if that penny were simply a part of the general fund revenue, it would certainly would reduce by at least seven and a half million what SUA transfers to the city. So, I mean, it, it would go a long way to, to the goal.
Well, I, regardless of whether we had the third cent or not?
We still try to reduce that, absolutely.
The differential, that marginal amount that's more than the dedicated sales tax, is the portion that I'm really talking about.
I understand. No, I agree, I agree with you, and it's, I don't know of anybody in the state who's been able to get that down to, to zero, any of the cities, unless, there are some cities that, that can do that.
You won't even give me, you won't even give me a little bit, I'm not trying to get it to zero. I'm just trying to get the arrow to be from going-
Oh, yeah.
-being larger, getting smaller.
I agree.
It'd be very uncommon to be zero, just like it's very uncommon for the utility authority to get the one percent sales tax.
Right.
When I'm talking to my peers across the nation, and everybody always gets on to the conversation of how much do you transfer to the general fund? When I tell them how much we transfer, they go, "Oh, my gosh," and, and then I tell them, "Well, we got a one, one percent sales tax," and they go, "Oh, okay."
Yeah.
And so, that, that's part of it. But generally, I mean, in fact, there was on one of the American Public Power Association's, one of the, they've got a utility managers' web chat, and that was on one of the recent ones. And so, it was, I think, generally around four to five percent was, was what I was seeing as a, about average amount.
Of the utility fund's revenue?
Yes.
So, what would four or five percent of ours be?
Well, if you take out the sales tax, you know, if you take out the, the sales tax, I think that puts us probably, I think we're around seventy million dollars of revenue with the sales tax, and about eight million of that is sales tax. So, sixty-two, five percent of sixty-two million would be about three, a little over three million a year, so it'd be-
Half, half of what currently is being-
Yeah, at least, yeah. Yeah, so it would, you know, then, of course, you know, you either have to reduce expenses or increase revenue on the other side to make it balance. It's a balancing game, yeah.
I'm going to switch gears. I would like to, I don't know if I'm talking general fund or general government. Salaries, they go in general government?
The only, the only salaries in general government are-
What, okay.
City council and, and the mayor's stipends are in there as salaries for general government. City hall maintenance, personnel are in that budget. I'm trying to think what other personnel are in the general government department.
Marketing and public information, public relations interns, multimedia technician.
Right, right. Now, we did-
Get rid of the change coordinator.
There, pardon?
The change coordinator, is that not in?
That, that position's, was eliminated. It's gone.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, we did, we did tempor, there's a temporarily placement of a million dollars in that personnel slot that doesn't stay there. We were waiting until, if, should the council approve the budget with a three percent COLA, the total COLA for all city employees is in a lump sum in that right now, but if that's, if the budget's adopted, that would be distributed in all the departments.
And that lump sum is, if, if the COLA, cost of living-
Yes, cost of living adjustment.
Adjustment.
Three million five.
One million five for a three percent cost of living adjustment.
For all five hundred and twenty employees.
For five hundred and twenty employees, okay. So, can you tell me how you arrive at the cost of living adjustment?
Yeah, the cost of living, we look at the, the cost, CIP, consumer price, CPI, the consumer price index, we don't look at the national number, the closest thing we can get to local is the Southwest region, the Department of Labor, every month tracks the, the purchasing power of, of the dollar in the United States. And what we do every year, historically, is to look at that, and look, look at our economy, and try to determine if we can make an adjustment that, that keeps the value of today's dollar in your paycheck, able to buy the same thing it could a year ago. So, it's not really a raise, it's just a, an adjustment for the inflation of goods in the economy. We, we're doing that up until two thousand and nine, when we had the recession, we, we froze the cost of living for a couple of years, and then we did some three percents. We've gone, we've taken the pre-recession Department of Labor statistics through the present time, and it looks like it would take three point seven percent to get us back on track, but we think, again, that's a regional number, we think three percent's closer for local, and so we recommend a three percent.
Go, he's got a question.
Well, I wouldn't think it would be more likely.
Now, cost of living, I know you're saying that's just, you know, three percent, but at the same time, the city employees are still going to get raises, so some of them will see a five to seven percent increase in their salaries per year, regardless of, I know you're just saying that goods will cost more than they did last year, which is, you know.
Some, some employees, and I don't have that number, I don't think we have a number.
Well, I don't, I don't, I'm, you don't have to tell me every single employee, but I'm saying, some employees will still get raises, and so some will get a five to seven percent ju-
I think each step is three percent.
Okay, so, the six, some employees will get a six percent raise.
If they're eligible to be, to be understood, and they're in the pay plan, and they're, they have a satisfactory evaluation, they will do that, and those numbers are already included in the departments, those are slated in, and as if they will move on COLA, we keep that separately for you all to approve, before we actually put in the numbers, that's why it's sitting out there in the general fund as a lump sum. But any scheduled raises pursuant to the pay plan are included in the numbers, they're not additional.
Okay.
And it would be just for those, those employees who are newer to the city?
Right, we have a large number of employees that are top-down in the pay plan.
Okay, but just, just to clarify, just from my, I just want to make sure this, some employees will get a six percent raise?
Yes.
Okay.
And can you, oh, I'm sorry, one question I'm going, the federal guidelines for cost of living is how much of an increase, a percentage?
The federal guideline?
Federal, uh-huh.
Oh, I haven't seen the federal number, the Southwest region, I think this year is like two-six, two-seven?
It's one point five, I believe.
One point six, well, the, the change in the regional CPI over the last calendar year was one point six percent.
One point six percent, okay, I'm repeating you so they hear it on this. One point six percent.
Yeah, one point six, yeah, we're just keep saying it back and forth, yeah.
Thank you.
If I recall, Dan, you said the last time we met, that you had calculated that over a three-year period.
Yes.
But I just want to pick at you a little bit.
Okay.
For the words you, you said the three percent COLA really wasn't a raise, well, it is.
It is.
It is a raise, and what, and I, and I, this isn't anything I haven't said before, but my preference would be to get away from that kind of language of cost of living adjustment. Most of the people that live in Stillwater that pay the taxes aren't getting a cost of living adjustment, and governmental employees, that's sort of an old-school idea that we need to make our salaries whole, raise programs need to be based on performance, and accomplishment, and efficiencies, and we've got great employees, and we have lots to talk about. We don't need to frame a raise program in terms of cost of living adjustments and steps. It's just my opinion.
No.
But, you know, again, I'm going to repeat it, we've got a lot of people out in the community that don't get a cost of living adjustment, and when we base utility changes and our salary programs on cost of living, the people that are paying those aren't getting those cost of living bumps and those inflationary adjustments. So, I, I think it's better for the economy, even locally, when we base our raise programs based on efficiency and productivity increases.
Oh, I, I, yeah, I understand, and I don't, I don't disagree with that.
It's better now.
No, I don't disagree with that, and I, I think, I think it, I think it's going to take a, a lot of hard look at our, our structure of our pay plan, in that, let's say you get a, an individual who comes to work in a, in a position, and they worked with the city for ten years, they're at the top salary, and then based on that philosophy with our current type of pay plan, they could work for another ten years and never get another raise again.
And that's not good, if they're performing?
Right.
I don't care about the individuals, if a guy's performing, whether he gets eight or twelve, or two, that's management's decision, and the leadership team to decide.
Oh, yeah.
But base it on performance, and accomplishment, and efficiencies, and you guys have accomplished a lot of good things over the last couple of years, and saved a lot of money, and employees need to be rewarded for what they've done, and the work they've taken on.
Yeah, I agree.
So, I mean, we've got a better story to tell than just, we're bumping up these salaries because of cost of living adjustment.
And one of the things that we're actually, one of the major initiatives that we're undertaking at this point in time is consolidation. Is consolidation of our operations, and, and that will have what's called a, we're developing a skills-based pay plan with that. And that's, that's combining streets, traffic control, waste management, parks maintenance, water distribution, wastewater collection, and facilities maintenance. Did I miss any guys? And that's combining them into one working unit, and, and once we are able to get through the full implementation of that program, we will have a skills-based pay plan for those individuals.
Approximately, how many of our employees will that, and I don't need a har, give me a percentage, ballpark me, is that, so that's twenty percent-ish?
Yeah, and we also have others, like in, in electric, the, in electric distribution, the lineman progression is a skills-based, and we've done that in generation and transmission, too. So, we are transitioning to those things, and then adding a performance element will be something in addition to the, the skills-based type program. So, I guess, we're not totally there, but we are working that direction.
The flip side, I mean, the way that Vice Mayor Weaver put it, is very accurate. The other reason it needs to be a performance base is, there's absolutely no doubt that if you're sitting in an office, whether it's three people or five hundred people, and everyone's getting the same amount of an increase, this is a disincentive, this incentivizes-
This incentivizes people to not do their best, and there've got to be ways that we can implement performance across the board in every department, in every area. It may not be the traditional city way of doing things, and when I say city, I'm talking municipal all around the world, but while we are implementing those things, we need much more specifics in the conversation.
And we have a, we have a program, our, our evaluation, our annual evaluation program that would lend to that, because we, we have three rating categories in our evaluation program, and we have, we have multiple working or classifications based on if you're, say, a clerical or you're a labor-type position, there, I think there's four of those, but in each of our ratings, we have an exceeds expectation, a meets expectation, or below expectation. If you get a below expectation rating in any one of those categories, you do not, you're not eligible for a raise until you make correction. You will get a performance improvement plan, and then once you've made the corrections, you don't go, you don't, it's not retroactive, but once you've made the corrections and you are then meeting, demonstrated that you are meeting expectations, uh, then you're eligible for that pay increase. And one of the things that we talked about to our employees when we implemented this program, four, five, it's probably five years ago, that, that we have high expectations. Uh, we have no average, there's no, you know, there's, some of the traditional review criteria had an average rating in there, and we said, no, we, we, that, that doesn't meet our expectations to have average employees. We have, our, our expectations are above average, so if you're meeting expectations, you're doing a good job for this community. And so, that's, that's kinda gives you a sense of, you know, we're there partially in that sense, too.
And, and the explanation that Dan had about our consolidated group. The explanation that Mr. Bankership gave on the consolidated group, that's the first step to this pay plan, the change over for the entire, once we get that in place, then it becomes the, the template for other positions throughout the organization, but we have to start with some, some place, and so that, uh, that seemed to be the most logical since we're doing the consolidation, to start with that skills-based pay. But it translates to office employees, it translates to professional positions, it translates to other positions throughout this organization, but it's one step at a time. So, that's where we're starting, but our long-term goal is to implement some sort of skill-based pay throughout the organization, but it's gonna take time.
That segues into my next question. I just had written down transition, because Dan had said that. So, long-term goal, I think you said, and you said transition, can you give us a ballpark? Are you talking about next year, are you talking about five years?
This is new, this is new not only to the city of Stillwater, but to municipalities in general. So, we don't wanna reach out there and develop a system that ultimately is gonna fail. So, we'd like to start a little bit slow with this first group, and then once we get that template built, it'd be so much easier to bring others on board in their prospective positions, but getting that template built, we wanna move slowly and cautiously to make sure that we, we don't create a system that is, is, uh, not rewarding to the employee and doesn't meet the needs of the organization. So, a little bit slow, um, we're looking at sometime in the first six months of the next fiscal year of trying to have that done, but whether it's completed or not, we won't know, because it's, it's new territory for all of us.
Probably something in the neighborhood of 2 to 3.
Just, just real quickly on the, on the consolidation, I just was gonna add that we had set a goal internally that we were gonna have an implementation plan ready to go by July 1, and we're on track for that, for this entire consolidation of those divisions. So, that's kinda the goal in, in getting this going. Having the plan and having it fully implemented is, is kind of two different things. The skills-based pay component, I, we didn't get into that a lot, but what it amounts to is that if you acquire a skill, and that's certified to do it, demonstrate that you can do it, and, and continually maintain that skill, a pay increase goes with that. If you lose that skill or you lose your certification, it can go the other direction. So, it's very much based on whether or not you demonstrate you can do something, like drive a backhoe, for example. So, that's, that's kinda how the, how the skills-based pay works.
Okay, that's good, I like that. And I like what Mayor Bartley said when you were talking about, it's not the way maybe that municipalities have done it, but, uh, Dan, you did refer to us as a corporation when we started off, so I like that we're, we're trending towards this, we need to do this, it's, uh, it gets responsible, so. Um, I have one more question. In the budget in general, I don't know if it's general, general government, there are, uh, there's a, it says council directives, 150,000, and then it says contingency, 150,000. Could you please explain those?
Yeah, look, sir, uh... You're, you're probably not, you notice, most, most budgets have a contingency at every department, we don't do that. We have two contingency funds, 150 each, and we refer to them as council contingency and administration contingency. And we, we rarely spend all of them, we rarely spend half of them, we rarely spend a third of them, but it's, it's, it's like any other contingency. Uh, when you're talking a million-dollar, bu-- a hundred-million-dollar budget, a 1% contingency would be a million, a half a percent would be 500,000, we're only talking three, we're down to a third of a, you know, 3/10s of 1%, it's a pretty small contingency. But wha-- what happens throughout the year, some council members may, uh, will go to some state training workshops, may to go to a state Oklahoma Municipal League Conference, you may go to the National League of Cities conferences, uh, expenses from that would come from that contingency. We don't put special line items for that. More commonly, uh, what I see happen is we'll get into November, December, and there'll be some special project that comes up in the community, and the city council is like, wow, I wish we could hire a consultant to do this for $20,000 to help us get this really timed to do it. That's a source that you can go to, it's kinda your contingency fund. The administrative contingency fund, if we have something unforeseen, let's say we have a, an air conditioner go out in one of the departments that we just didn't budget for, and it's a, it's a critical air conditioner that keeps all the computers cool or something, I could go to that administrative contingency and authorize up to my authority money to transfer to repair that. So, that's, that's, uh, what those are used for.
We also have an SUA contingency, and like this year, we, we transferred, I think, approximately $30,000 out of that to help cover, uh, credit card charges, because our customers who pay their bills are paid more by credit card, so there's charges associated with that that we didn't anticipate, and so things like that is what we use the, the contingency for.
How much did we spend this year for 2013?
Oh, we just looked at that, Marty, less than a third on both of them, but...
I think we sent an email out, but the, um, the council contingency, uh, expenditures out there were a gift for Councilor Hoffman, the OSU parents, and money to the chamber for evaluation of the air service, and, uh, so there was, uh, about 142,000 left in that , approximately, $8,000 to spend on all those things total. And the administrative contingency, um, we spent 3,500 to break down and store the monument that was west of town at Western and Highway 51, and then, uh, $20,000 for a portion of the technology and research part. So, there's 126,500 left in the administrative contingency, and I don't have a breakdown on SUA, but it's...
And I've gone from my head.
Um, it wasn't much.
Other than just the credit card?
Right.
And those funds that we don't use are projected as part of the beginning balance, which is shown as the revenues that we're budgeting next year, so it's, it's there in case we need it, and hopefully we don't.
How did we pay for Chandler things?
Uh, that was, I thought that was out of the contingency.
That we paid for that, and we did a budget remuneration for that, and we'll pay for that as...
See, then, Stillwater, you know, Economic Development Authority, yes.
My question is on the airport, on the capital and the budget. I know there's been a lot of talk of commercial, or trying to get a commercial and just trying to find someone. Uh, if we do end up getting that, I don't know the timeframe on that, but is there money in the budget to, um, run that, I mean, and, you know, work that if that does come about, and is there anything as far as capital improvements that we should be putting in here to make us more, I don't know the correct word, more better-looking? I, I think, is this, are you asking if we do obtain commercial air service, does this budget have the money in it for us to build the TSA security and those type of items? Is that your question? Correct, and also, is there anything else in the budget that we think that should be in here to make us more, why can't I think of that word?
Quality of life.
No, no. Aesthetically pleasing? Yes, that works. Okay, so, do we have the money in the budget for the capital improvements necessary at the airport to meet the needs for commercial air travel? Yes. Plus make it look pretty? Yes. Okay.
Not totally. Um, we, and Gary Johnson's here, too. We did qualify for a federal grant, I believe that's 347,000, which would, should we secure commercial air service here, then we can draw that grant to help on some of those build-out costs. Uh, we will have to, if we receive notice that we're going to get commercial air service here, we'll have not a lot of lead time, about six months, we would have to look very, very hard at we, our reserves and come back to the council. Um, again, we don't have a hard number on what that's going to be, but Gary, you wanna address that a little bit, if you, you could?
Couple of items, uh, and thank you for asking, a couple of items would be terminal renovations that would be directly connected to that, TSA, accommodating the TSA, accommodating the airline, expanding the terminal to the extent necessary to have a secure holding area. Uh, an additional item that, uh, that we have in our consideration as we are working toward that is, uh, equipment that would be necessary out on the flight line to work with the airline, and, uh, we have a, a, a plan in place as far as, let's say, preliminary estimates, but to actually do request and do a build-out on that, I think we need to get just a little closer, I think that's been kinda the consensus. Uh, we'd like to say we're there, but, uh, but we're not. Uh, other, other areas, of course, would be automobile parking and considering what needs to be there, I think those are a little smaller expenses on the, on the beginning of it, but, uh, uh, of course, a advertising promotional plan that would go along with that, so...
Build out, you said you, you have a, just a rough estimate for the build-out of everything to...
For the cost?
Yeah.
I hate to put a figure on that, I don't have it with me.
Okay.
But the terminal, uh, expansion area could be in the 400,000 range, depends on how fast we have to respond.
Okay, thanks.
I'd like, Gary, you would just, and not, we don't have to be in a lot of specifics in the formulas, but explain that if we would get commercial air service, that it would entitle us to some additional federal income on some of those subsidies, it would be a good return on investment.
Yeah, that's a good point. The, uh, the entitlement funds that come when you board at least 10,000 passengers a year, uh, amount to a million dollars a year, those revenues will, of course, come every year after the first year of 10,000 or more deployments. So, that's a nice revenue stream that we don't now have. Uh, there will be other revenue streams, uh, once the airline service gets in place, in landing fees and rental in the terminal building, uh, ancillary services, rental car, taxi cab, and other things that some folks pay fees to be either access the terminal or be in the terminal. So, so the revenue picture is going to lag behind the service, but, uh, the overall, uh, revenue, the big number revenue is gonna be the employment fees, and that comes from ticket sales. The ticket sales tax goes in the trust fund, and then it's drilled back out to the various airports that have scheduled service.
Yeah, thank you, Gary, I just wanted to mention that, because even, you know, whether we have to spend 400,000 or 800,000 in, in making improvements to our airports to accommodate commercial service, the, the prospect of within a year or so, starting to receive a million dollars a year to help offset the operating budget at the airport is a huge return on investment, as well as the other benefits to the community, so just wanted to point that out.
This may be a question really directed at Marcy, 'cause it's coming off state-mandated form. I think most people, if, when they look at this format, and down under expenditures, about four lines down under finance, at a general fund, it's anywhere expensive, 1.1, and under debt service fund, at just over a million dollars. If someone were to say, does that mean our debt service next year will be $2 million?
No, that, um, debt, debt service for, um, what's paid out of our, what we call our sinking fund, our debt service fund, is just under our accounting system in the finance department. So, that is truly just, um, the one, the one that's under debt service, um, is truly just what is paid, um, for GO bonds for the city. The rest of those expenditures are for finance and municipal court.
Okay, so, next year, we'll be paying a million dollars towards the GO bonds that were taken out in 2001-ish?
Yes. We do have a separate debt service fund, so it's under the debt service fund column.
Yeah, that's, that's the million that I was referring to.
Right.
Under the general government fund, um, it says advertising and legal, I believe that says publications, $100,000. Just a little bit of an explanation there.
I apologize, it's mostly legal, legal required publication.
Yes. We have several things, we're required to publish ordinances, um, that, um, there are several different things, our bid notices, um, we just have a multitude of things that we're required to publish.
So, if you're publishing online, right, but you have to publish other places, too?
This, yes, the state law requires us to publish in a paper of a certain amount of circulation, so, um, we do only publish, publish in the Stillwater news press, uh, we don't publish everywhere, and we do put on the website, but, um, they have not, you know, they're, they're still counting on their people not having access to computers, and so relying on the newspaper for distribution of that information. Uh, the other, some of our other things, um, as we mentioned earlier, our marketing and public relations department gets paid out of this general government division, and so, um, they're doing, um, a lot of different things for us, and a lot of their budget is coming in here, and so whenever they do any of the city ads for, you know, all of our activities, um, they work on the stuffers that go into the utility bills, all those types of things come out of this account.
Okay, how much, um, I believe I looked last year, and this was the same, was it the same budget?
We, we budgeted the same.
Okay.
I'd have to, I'd have to look for you to give you the actual that was spent.
I, okay, have, I guess I'm just wondering, uh, a percentage of what we've spent so far.
Okay, I'd have to look that up for you.
Other than the contingency funds that you discussed, do we have a percent that's unbudgeted reserve?
No, it's not a percentage per se, we have... Several years ago, the council talked about creating an emergency reserve, uh, there was none, I know there was none, not a formal one nine years ago when I came, but, um, they originally tried to put 9 million in that fund, they set a goal of 13 million, uh, it was never formally adopted, there was no resolution, there was no ordinance, so we've never had a, a firm policy set. That was a completely, it was a different council, but we, we've kind of... That was a completely, it was a different council, but we, we've kind of adhered to that and, and kept that 13 million as a goal. We have less than 13 million unrestricted funds right now. It's, it's very close, it'll be very close to that. I don't know what the balance is projected to be in this budget.
The balance that's actually on hand at City Hall is 6.6 million.
The balance on hand at City Hall in all of our funds is 6.6 million is what we term to be our reserve. However, many years ago, we also have the remnants of a defined benefit retirement plan that has about $7 million in funds. It's obviously very overfunded. There are two employees, two retired employees still as participants in that plan. And so, that money is with the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund until that plan is no longer active. And so, we have chosen to leave those funds there because they're getting basically a return of between 7.5 and 9%, which is way far above what we could invest it for.
We could take it all out and invest it at 1.5.
So, but when you, when you combine those, we're, we're close.
And we, we count that as a part of it, so our reserve is at 13 million plus. Even though it's in the municipal retirement fund, the amount that would be absolutely required to leave there is a fraction of that. So if, if the city had a true emergency where you, the council wanted to access emergency funds for some disaster, we could access that very quickly. So it's, it's available, but it's, it's in a protected situation.
Marcy, of that 6.5 that you mentioned, how many months' payroll would that be? Just to put it in perspective. What's a month's payroll? Okay, thank you. It, this, this statement, it's coming off your question about reserve. I, I think that that conversation probably needs, we, we need to delve into that more because I think there's a, I think there's a happy balance between no reserve and entirely too much reserve. Because if you have too much in reserve, then what are you doing with all the people's money? You've got the people's money just sitting. And so, we, we need to know where the right spot is on reserve. Now, I don't say that to imply, well, we've got it, so you gotta spend it. I don't mean it that way. But I don't think we ought to be setting a goal of trying to create as large a bank account as you could possibly create. There are other, more effective ways to be handling that money, whether that be, you know, how do we adjust rates on other items? Those type of things, as opposed to setting a goal of trying to just grab and hold.
You know, and it goes back, one of the questions earlier about what other cities do, and we've, we've talked about this off and on over the years, and I do have access to a lot of city managers around the country through ICMA. It was like 9,000 members. They don't all respond when I send the questions out, but I get hundreds of responses. And we threw that question out for discussion on our board last year about what is a good percentage of your municipal budget to keep as a reserve? The most common was somewhere around 3, 4, 5%. Some said 10. Some said they had no clue, they didn't have any policy. So it's something that's, is very rare to find any kind of a guideline. There are a couple of cities around the country responded and said they have six months of operating funds, half of their budget is in reserve. That's an extreme example. But the majority are around 5 to 10 at the most, as far as a percentage. And again, I can't say that that is the average, that's just the several responses that I got.
Going back to what John said about, you know, trying to figure out what is that right number, we've got some pretty recent experience with the economic downturn.
Yes.
You know, you want to be able to cover city services for a period of time, but even in the worst of times like what we just went through, our income didn't go to zero.
Right.
It did fall off. So, trying to measure how much of a cushion do we need to have to softland, you know, you know, a severe reduction in revenues. So it's more than just trying to cover your employees, it's about delivering those services.
Absolutely.
But at some point, I think six months of no revenue isn't a reasonable.
That's not gonna, yeah.
That's not a reasonable scenario, but a 10% decrease in revenue, maybe that is. And that would get us back to the 3 to 6 million.
Yeah, we, we made those budgeted. And on the flip side, when you're talking about having operating expenses, the other thing that you hear people talk about for reserves is, what if a tornado wipes out? Well, we're not gonna be paying for, I mean, we'll have access to some emergency help at that point, wouldn't we, to be able to get something like that up and running?
Yes, we, we would, we would. And in fact, if you're, it's, this is interesting timing, but if you're interested, we are going to be participating in a webinar on Wednesday from 1:00 to 2:30. And it's on development of a cash reserve policy, and it's put on by the American Public Power Association. So it'll be slanted towards all utilities, but these are the foremost experts in the field. And so if you're interested, we're, it'll, we're, we're having that here, and not in this room, but in our city manager's conference room. I'd rather you bring us a report. I'd be happy to bring you in for a part, sir. But if you're interested in coming and sitting in yourself, it is at 1:00 on Wednesday, and you're welcome to join us.
In the case of the tornado, though, our system, we would ask you to do an emergency declaration at that time, but FEMA is where our help would come from for damage to a city-owned facility. However, it's done on reimbursement. And whenever we've utilized those funds before, it's, it's usually a year, year and a half, sometimes two after the fact before you see those funds are being reimbursed. So, meantime, we'd be rebuilding and foregoing any revenue. And so, so that's when you tap into your reserve. We would anticipate it getting repaid partially, but that's when you'd access your reserve.
And the, the 2 million you said, or, that's just for salaries, that's not operating as well, correct? For a month? Or?
No, that's just.
Pass, that's just pay, so that wouldn't be hardly any, I mean, that would maybe be a month, a month and a half?
Well, we pay, we pay about $2 million a month or more just for our electricity that we purchase.
So, what, I mean, I guess my, my, my question to you?
109 divided by 12.
Okay, so my question to you is, you know, the discussion of what's a, what's too much and what's not enough. Obviously, where we're at isn't, definitely not even close to too much. I mean, 'cause you said we're 10 million or something altogether, or it's around 13, so I mean, okay.
Vice Mayor Weaver was saying that the probability of our income dropping to zero and having to use 100% of the reserves to operate is, that's, that's, that's remote. You know, if your, if your, if your revenue drops off 10% or even drops off 20%, then you're only looking at needing a couple million a month to be full strength. And so, you know, 10 million would give you five or six months, even in that worst-case scenario.
So, the downturn, it was the sales tax that took the hit.
Yeah, and, and about, you know, 1.5, 2 million could, it would have made a huge difference for a year.
What's the average cost of elections? I know that I saw that budgeted. I know we have them every year.
We just looked at, we had three in the last year. We had one in April, one in March, and one last November. Marcy?
Yes, November was 10,700. March was 11,055. And April was 10,530. So, it's about 33,000.
And how much was budgeted? Just because I can't.
40,000.
Part of it's driven by the number of voters, type of election, the ballots. But, you know, you can figure minimum of 10. Normally it's around 12, 11 to 12.
Okay. And subscription fees? Can you just elaborate? There's a budget of $46,000 for dues and subscription fees in the general.
The largest one is the Oklahoma Municipal League, which is a little over 32,000. It's based on population and your, there's a formula. The Oklahoma Municipal League provides all the training for city council, provides training sessions for city employees.
So that's two a year then? All the training would be two a year?
And they lobby for all the cities. I mean, actually, you know, the simplest thing to put is they're, they're the major lobbying organization for municipalities.
Okay. And the training for city councillors is?
Part of that.
About $100?
Oh, the charges, but that's not what it costs them to put it on.
Okay.
And we have other fees out of that 40,000.
Also, our fees to co-ed, $100. And then, we belong to the Mayor's Association, which is about 405. But the majority is OML.
We used to have a, maintain a, a membership in the National League of Cities. We dropped that. It's a little over, it's close to $4,000 a year. But we weren't, none of the council members were real active in that, so we dropped it about three or four years ago.
Councillors, I kind of have a big-picture question for you. And not necessarily looking for an answer because tonight, there's, there's no official action to be taken. But what we, how we kind of need, when we get to wrapping tonight's meeting up, and I'm not saying that's where we're at, we have plenty of opportunity to talk, but where we kind of need to wrap, when we wrap this up, we need to be able to tell the folks on this side of the, on the other side of the table, are the circles the right size for going forward or not? Because we do have a public hearing coming up in a week, and we need to know if we're gonna be making any changes to this proposed budget between now and then, or then, so that at the public hearing, we can make sure the public has the latest version. Does that kind of make sense? So we need to be at some point going, are, are the circles the right size?
Can we make the transportation, the roads, a bigger circle? Or are we?
You certainly can. All you have to do is next, choose what other circle you want to make smaller. It's like a balancing scale. It's two-sided. If you want to make any one of them a little smaller, then where you, then you make something else bigger. That's an allocation of all of them, so.
John, I just find that a really tough question.
I agree.
I mean, and, and really impossible to answer without goals and standards and long-range picture, long-range economic picture of the city. Yeah, make, you know, on the green side, make sales tax that big.
You want to raise the sales tax?
Well, I mean, just, I mean, just something. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I hear what you're saying, but we're gonna have to vote on something. And we can sit here and say, yeah, I, I wish we had a 15-year-old strategic plan that we'd been updating every year that had all the context and had all the criteria and had all these goals. We don't. And we're not going to before the end of June. And so, a vote's gonna have to happen on a specific budget. And we can be working on how to create these metrics that, that you're talking about. But we're gonna have to vote on a budget within the next six weeks.
To understand where these size of circles came from, I mean, they've been this way for a while, but especially over the last four years, at least, the council has repeatedly talked about several things. And one is core services. When we say core services, we're talking fire, police, streets, utilities, parks, development services. And the goal has been, talked about, is that the level of service worth that we're developing in each of those departments has been, the direction is, don't let it get any deteriorate. We want to maintain good, quality, full staffing, full service in all those core services.
Our services sustain.
And so that's been, that's always our first criteria, is to maintain a level of police department operations comparable to what it is right now, make sure they're fully funded, fully staffed, fully equipped. Same philosophy goes for fire, for the maintenance of our parks, for all of our core services. And then, you know, we've, we've added emphasis to those, to each one through, every year, through the visioning process, through the public input, and looking at all of our equipment. And we tweak those by saying, this year, let's upgrade the parks in terms of playground equipment over a period of five years. Or, let's improve the fleet of police cars over a period of five or six years. So, we set those goals, but the, the whole premise is, is that the council has repeatedly said, this balance that we have of these circles is pretty close. Let's work on tweaks and adjustments throughout the year, and we can, we need to do it by some more strategic planning. But these aren't just random, they really come from a lot of guidance from that table up there over the last several years.
Well, and the, the two big ones that are, for lack of a better word, discretionary. Because what it costs to buy electricity really isn't within our control. The cost for police services and fire services really is not within our control, there's not much discretion there. Where there is discretion, is within transportation, is within park and rec. And I am extremely glad that we have, in this coming year budget, another 4 million going to the pavement management system. I wish it could be eight. But I'm glad we have at least, Dr. Peak's recommendation of at least four to maintain. And I anticipate the same type of implementation through the pavement management system that we're just now starting to feel with this year's being implemented now over the next four-ish months. Is that a fair assessment? And so, that much going into next year's budget, I think, is extremely critical, and I'm glad that it's there. And park and rec, the, I, I think one thing that we need to be very proud of, especially when it comes to budget time, is the difference in what the park and rec budget looks like now than it did three years ago, specifically on the golf course. Three years ago, the golf course had about a $350,000 subsidy. This year, it's going to turn how much profit?
John?
It's breaking even.
It's breaking even. I, I thought I saw a 25,000 projection. Maybe I dreamt that.
If it's a little bit over breaking even.
That doesn't count. That's breaking even, and that's awesome. But, but point being that, that department looked at the golf course and said, this specific element doesn't need to be a subsidized item. And I think that's something that department to department has been doing, working on the budget. So, I mean, that right there, even if park and rec stayed the exact same from three years ago to now, that's $350,000 that we were able to allocate to playground improvements. Or to, instead of playground improvements this coming up year, to the tennis courts. So those two items, I am extremely pleased that those are discretionary. That is where we are hearing from the public on where does focus need to be. That I'm very pleased with. I, but I do wish those circles could be bigger.
You know, to Pat's point, though, about strategic, a strategic plan, personally, I'm not a big fan of big strategic planning efforts, but we have done quite a bit of planning. This is an organization that has a lot of different missions. You know, Parks and Rec has a plan, the pavement management system was something that was spun up several years ago, and we're just now seeing the fruits of it. Perhaps it could be a good task for the city manager to, to look at all the different plans that we have on the shelf that are being implemented and tie them to the circle. that we have on the shelf that are being implemented and tie them to the circles, so that, you know, new council members can see, this is what's been going on, and this is the context for how the circles are decided that they are. I remember when we didn't have $4 million in transportation, you know, and that was as a result of a lot of work on the council's part and staff. And we need to pull these plans together and make them more accessible.
I hear you. I hear what you're saying there. And the hardest part, and here's the scary part, when you and I are the old knowledgeable guys on council...
Well, all of us at least, right?
Maybe for you. But when we're the ones that have the five years of experience, and we're the old ones on the council, there's no doubt that the knowledge level of newer councilors, they're at a huge disadvantage in trying to put all these millions of pieces of information together. I remember after my first year, I probably didn't remember, six words of the budget talk because it is so overwhelming. And so how, putting the format together and all that information into digestible pieces, I totally get how impossible that is for just right off the bat, much less, this is what, your fifth meeting? You know, this is, so, I mean, it is very difficult to put all those together.
And that's not going to change. Council members change. So it's always going to be this way. That's why we need a plan, and that's why we need something that we can see.
I'm not talking just for the council members either. Citizens, this is their money. They need to be able to see what we're working for, what we've accomplished, what, you know, departmentally, we're looking at five years from now. This is, this is for everyone, not just councilors.
It's kind of like a comprehensive plan.
Whatever you want to call it. And I'm, I agree with Joe. You know, you don't want to spend a lot of time doing strategic planning, but I know that you're not working willy-nilly. I mean, you've already said here today, internally, we had this goal. Well, why does it have to be internal? I mean, you know, we're, it's not like, well, it just needs to be external, and everyone needs to have access to what we're planning to do, what we're hoping to do.
Agreed.
Uh, can I? I hate to go back to this, and I guess, let me start with this. I think the city of Stillwater employees do a great job, but, and so when I ask this question, I just want that to be known. Can you tell me what the, just across-the-board, 3% cost of living, how much that is? What that would be a standard, the, just the 3%, not their raises, but, you know, 3%? What is that?
In total?
In total.
It's a billion and five.
Okay.
You're saying a million and five, you're saying a million and 5,000?
Yes. A million and 5,000.
Yeah, yeah. So 1.5 million is a...
No. Million, 5,000.
Okay. That's what you were saying, sorry. Okay.
Just say a million, but it's a million. Yeah, that's, yeah. I was confused, and I knew what the number was.
$1,000 over a million.
Okay. All right.
Now, that cost also includes all the overheads you say, you know, the FICA, the social security, the retirements, all the, it's not just pure salary. It's all the relevant costs.
Everything that we would refer to as a roll-up. So if you're paying salary, you're paying FICA, and you're paying retirement, so that's all inclusive of everything you're generating.
I want to make sure that the council understands, we have very long-tenured employees, and there's more than half of our employees that don't have step raises available to them. So, and these people have been here 20, 25, 30, 35 years. So if we don't do a COLA, and certainly up to you all, then they will not have a raise this year, or next year, or the year after. So for more than 50% of our employees, this is the only salary increase to get. And you're actually right, there are other employees who have a step available along with the COLA, but at some point, those people will be topped out as well.
So we could give the COLA to the people who are topped out, and the people that aren't topped out, who didn't get a raise, a standard raise, correct?
There's a big line out balance.
And I'm not, I mean, obviously, I'm not saying this is happening, I'm just, I'm just wanting to know. I mean, the people who are topped out, we could give them a 3% raise, since they're not going to get one, and the people who still have a raise available, they could get a 3% raise as well, instead of giving them a 6% raise.
Well, I don't want to argue with you, but the problem with that is, you're justifying a raise for some employees based on cost of living, and then telling other employees they don't get that cost of living adjustment. They get a different raise based on steps of your service.
Well, I'm just wondering.
So, I mean, I think we, my personal opinion, we need to move to a performance-based pay plan, and employees rewarded as the management staff sees fit, based on the funds we have available, as opposed to a cost-of-living program and a step system.
And I think you heard, some of the things that we're doing, we think will develop toward that performance-based plan. It's just that it won't be in place this year, and so we would recommend that this COLA be placed in effect this year, and let us work toward performance-based during this year.
Joe, I'm going to direct this at you. I think you'll have the answer. Yes, you. You said that not everybody in Stillwater gets a raise. Just a general statement, OSU's the largest employer with $6,000, something like that. Do they get cost-of-living raises every year?
We've done it from time to time, but we haven't done it in a very long time. We've moved to a more performance-based system.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I'm not, I'm not trying to come in and change the system either. Just like you said, you guys have five years' experience. I understand that. I'm not trying to change it, and I'm not saying I'm against this. I just, if there's a better solution out there, like you're saying, I don't want to just keep saying, "We're looking into that." I want that to be something that gets done. Because, I mean, as Pat said, I mean, we're spending the city, I mean, we're all taxpayers at this table. We all live in the city, so we're spending our own money, too. But at the same time, I just want to make sure that we're spending that the correct way, especially because I know that's sometimes a target area to some people who are concerned with how the money's spent. I just want to make sure we're justifying it the best.
I believe you have the power to ensure that that occurs.
I'm going to put it on you.
Very good.
As far as this goes, if anything goes, that will get done. We're...
Perfect.
I'm going to determine that that's what I have.
Perfect.
And this cost of living doesn't go to city councilors, just to be clear. That's not, we don't get that.
We don't get that.
We don't get that, no. So...
All right. Any other questions, any other comments that we would have to staff?
I appreciate the time.
Any specific statements or changes? Now, I would say any changes we throw out there, and Mr. Dorman, you tell me if this is correct or not, I don't want to have to change and republish. Back on our dues and publications expenses, I don't want to incur any more.
You would not have to republish. We published this. This is to officially show the public that the proposed allocation of the fund is upon public hearing. Prior to your actual action to adopt, you have the, you may please...
We could change every single figure on here if need be.
If need be. Marcy?
I also wanted to remind you, we did send out in some emails last week, and some of the questions and answers that we sent out, we do have some position changes that are not reflected in those numbers that will change. As Councilor Noble mentioned earlier, the change coordinator is one of those positions, an assistant city attorney position, development services code compliance inspector, street and drainage superintendent. We will be adding the capital four, the library that was not in your original numbers. Was there anything else? I think those are just the things that have been identified, so those numbers...
Will come out.
Those will come out. That's, those positions coming out is 284,000 coming out. The published, that's just to start the hearing, so there's nothing cast in stone with that. We would not have to republish, even up to the night that you adopt the budget. We would have an attachment prepared for the resolution. Even if you made changes that night, we would just change the attachment and attach it to the resolution. So even up till the night of adoption, you can change.
Okay.
So can you tell us what we're doing next week? What do we address next week in the meeting? Do we have a meeting next week?
Yeah, we got a meeting next, we'll have a normal meeting, normal business meeting, and there will be an item under public hearings for a public hearing to, for the public to have a specific, another specific opportunity to be able to come and talk and give their comments at a city council meeting on this document. Now, then, public hearing on the 19th, what day do you anticipate an item on the agenda for action on this budget?
You have options. It could be on the 19th. It could be, but more realistically, it'd be on the first meeting in June. And the public hearing on this is not unlike a public hearing on a planning zoning commission. The, it would start by someone from staff in three minutes or less explaining this total number on this proposed budget that was published. You open the public hearing. Each person gets up to five minutes, like on any other public hearing. You, there's no for and against, you just take comments. When the public hearing closes, then staff's recommendation has already been made, we would recommend the adoption of this budget as presented. You may discuss what you hear at the public hearing. If anything you hear in the hearing you think would amend this, then you would give direction to staff, please make an adjustment to one of these columns in X dollars we think would be a response to the public. And it might, again, it gets a little tricky, it's just as difficult for the public as it is for you, I don't know, there's more, because it's like, if you want to take, if you want to put another $100,000 in this project, where do you want to take it from? I mean, that's what, that's the question you always have to answer. But you hear those comments, often, many of those comments can be accommodated within this proposed budget. Normally, it's just some guidance of things people would like to see happen, and we can try to do those within the context. But then with that, we make the recommendation, and you can have a resolution of adoption on June the 5th.
And the public can go to stillwater.org and download the proposed budget right now. I saw it on there. It's been there for about a week. They can also download a form, so they can speak, if that's what they want to do. Or they could email city councilors with their questions if they couldn't show up here. So very, a lot of ways to have your voice heard.
Anybody got anything else for this evening?
No, thank you.
Anything else we need to know? Let me rephrase that. As far as this budget goes, is there anything else that you need to share with us as we head into public hearing next week?
Just since, since we are talking about it being confusing and transparent and that type of thing, the million and 5,000 that would, if you so chose to approve the COLA as part of the proposed budget, it would not remain in that general government line. So it would be routed out to all the different divisions and departments, so for the adoption resolution, the numbers will look a little bit different than what they do on here, because finance salaries will be in finance, HR will be in HR, and so those numbers will change. The overall total will not change.
And that general government number would go down a million.
A million, 5,000.
Not quite, because part of it would stay there for those few salary increases. I would, would, just to let the council know, I've got, I really appreciate the hard work that all of our staff has done, but the admin team has done phenomenal, not just on the budget, but they're the brain trust that creates things like the consolidation plan and the leap forward and our leadership training programs, and all these things that are the skills-based pay. That's all happening right down the hall, in that think tank, and it's saving our public a lot of money, and we hope it's really delivering better service. I will trust them to answer questions next Monday night, I will not be here. That date falls, every year, there's three days that we have an opportunity to talk to retail developers, land acquisition people from all the major corporations and shopping centers. It's called RECON, and so our economic development team, Angela McGloth, myself, we'll go into that. We have, there's two or three developers working on projects here in Stillwater. They have appointments to meet with major retailers, they're trying to recruit interest. We'll be meeting with them as well, and see if we can continue to build some interest. So we won't be here on the 19th, but like I said, we've got staff that can really handle it very well.
Thanks for your hard work. Thank you.
Anything else?
Motion, Jerry.
I will take that as a motion.
Second.
And a second.
Mayor Bartley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weaver?
Yes.
Councilor Noble?
Yes.
Councilor Valentin?
Yes.